...being relocated, that's depicted in the materials. We did want to include that in the summary that Chairman provided that you can hear a reference to that relocation. It's an existing cellular antenna that's being relocated as part of this application because the water tower is coming down to make way for the new buildings. For purposes of witnesses this evening, we will begin with our civil engineer Brett Skapinetz, Brett Lattke, board and the public through the existing conditions of this site. As noted, this is a four parcel site. The proposal is to remove all of the existing features, consolidate those parcels, re-subdivide it so that one new lot will contain the residential component and another new lot will contain the commercial component. The applicant, in addition to working with the city and its professionals, has been working with the other outside agencies of this property and this site is governed by the County Middlesex, it's on the county road, also the DRCC, the Delaware Railroad and Cal Commission has oversight of this project and we have received extensive review comments from the agencies which have been incorporated into the plans that you have before this evening. So this has been a long road for the applicant, dealing with all the agencies, but we have a before you can project that incorporates the requests and recommendations of all the various agencies, including the city. I did also want to note for the record that the applicant, obviously this is a project in a redevelopment area, the applicant has been designated by the City of New Brunswick as the designated redevelopment developer of this site and has executed redevelopment agreement with the City of New Brunswick containing details of if this project were approved by this board, how that project would need to be constructed and the various components and phasing of that project. So there is a redevelopment agreement in place between the City of New Brunswick and my client, the applicant, and again, the applicant has been designated as the redevelopment in accordance with the plan to pursue and promote this project. That's a very quick overview. What I'd like to do, I mean, I have a number of witnesses this evening, so I'd like to begin with Mr. Skapinetz to come forward, give the board an overview and the public an overview of this site and the proposed redevelopment and how the site will be transformed into the proposed community.
Do you please state your names, tell your last name for the record?
Yes, first name is Brett, B-R-E-T-T, last name is Skapinetz, S-K-A-P-I-N-E-T-Z.
Do you swear our firm's oath of oath to nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Skapinetz, I have a number of exhibits to introduce this evening. Mr. Skapinetz, with the board and the public, your education, area of expertise and licenses you hold?
Sure, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Oregon University. I am currently Director of Dynamic Engineering Consultants at our Chester office. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey for well over 20 years and preside over applications in over 150 municipalities in the state. I was in New Brunswick, probably about 15 to 18 years ago. I did the Commerce B, now TD Bank, that's near the courthouse, corner from the courthouse many years ago. So it's been a while, good to be back.
Your licenses are still on good standing?
My license is still on good standing, yes.
Chairman, I'll offer Mr. Skapinetz as an expert in the field of civil engineering.
Well, thank you, Mr. Skapinetz. Thank you.
And Mr. Skapinetz, I know again you have a number of exhibits. Before you give any testimony, if you could mark them into the record, starting with exhibit A1, and then just give a brief description of what exhibit A1 details and the phase date.
If I may just to reject, if you can angle it just slightly more so that to make sure that the public can see it better.
Absolutely, yep, yep, I was gonna... Is that okay?
Yeah.
That location?
Yes.
So, I have up to four exhibits. I'm gonna begin with this A1, which I just marked as A1, which is entitled Aerial Map Exhibit. It's really not unlike with sheet number two of our site plan set, our set being dated January 21st to the last revision of June 28th. So this aerial exhibit, and it may be a little bit harder from further away, so I'll just use my pen to go around the site. The site itself, as described by the earlier four lots, is a lot of just about 23 acres, just over 23 acres in size, and as noted, was commercially used over several decades. If you go through historic aerials, you'll see that some of these buildings, buildings have been removed, demolished, but it's always been a mix of industrial, commercial type buildings, even chemical manufacturing, I understand, on this site. The main frontage is along Jersey Avenue, which is a county route, and then you have Sanford off on the north end of the site. And as I refer, go through the plans, I'm always going to refer to the north side, to the left side of the page, that's how my plans are oriented. So on the north end is Sanford, and we have the railroad, the New Jersey Transit Railroad right away, running through along the eastern side of the parcel. Last, there's a median feature with respect to Mile Run, which is a regulated waterway that essentially bisects the property. So it follows, runs through the property, sort of where my pen is, and curves through and then ultimately crosses Jersey Avenue at about the middle of the property. And that coincidentally is about where we're going to be subdividing the property. So Mr. Preparo noted, we're going to combine all four lots, and then we're gonna re-subdivide to create two lots, right about where my pen is, and that line is indicated within our plans. And that'll, and that'll result in one lot, the residential lot of 13.92 acres, and the non-residential portion of the lot, which is the southern half, as I go, and I'll go through that in a little bit more detail, will be 9.37 acres. You'll see from this aerial, I noted the railroad tracks are to the east, you have a mix of different uses, from the cemetery to mainly commercial, there's a trucking company use across the street, across Sanford from the property, there's some, there's a couple residential properties, but commercial as well, you have an auto body shop immediately to the south. So mainly commercials surrounding the property. The, was noted that there is a cell tower, there is a water tower that's located just up on the northern end of the property. That water tower has cellular communications on it currently, and we are gonna relocate that more to the middle of the property, and I'll get a little bit more detail on that in a moment as well. So with that, I will move to, let me move to this next exhibit. This is an overlay, I'll mark it A2. A2 is essentially an overlay of the proposed plan, and the plan has been colorized, so this is a unique plan, it's not within our site plan set, entitled Aerial Overlay with a preparation date of today, 7/14/2022. What I, what I showed in this a little bit more clearly will be the proposal for the residential development on the northern end of the site. You see Mile Run, which is the blue line running through, and almost in an S curve through the property, and then the retail and office component that we're proposing on the southern half. This just shows you general orientation from that overall aerial view. When I move to the next exhibit, this removes the aerials, just to provide more clarity so we can focus on the development itself. This is entitled Overall Site Plan Rendering, again with a date of 7/14/2022. So like the exhibit I just showed in A2, this is a rendered version of our site plan. This is not in our plan set, so this, this is a combination of our site landscaping plans that have been put together, overlaid and colorized for presentation. So you will see in it, you see various plantings and landscaping throughout, that matches what our landscaping shows in black and white, and obviously we, now if I go through, same orientation as every plan sheet as I mentioned before, Jersey Avenue is along the bottom, same foot is to the north. The residential component is comprised of two separate buildings, the larger which is lower to the northern end, and that has 660 units, the, sorry, it's a total of 660 units between them both. The building to the north has 438, 428 residential units, and 232 is in the smaller building on the southern end. There's a parking deck that is along the railroad edge of the property, it's a five-story tall parking deck that has 1,170 stalls. To get to the point where we need to be in compliance with the total number of stalls for this site, we have an additional 97 paved stalls that are shown within the paved area of the site. And in this plan, you know, those darker areas I show, that's paving and drive aisles, the buildings are the copper colored, and I think that's pretty clear. The landscaping is in various colors, and you'll see in circles, and then open areas, grass is what we see in the later green color. The non-residential lot to the south is comprised essentially of three structures, you know, the ones to the north end essentially combined. You have 5,000 square foot of retail space and 51,000 square feet, my glasses, Joe. You've got, to go through it, you've got a four-story mixed-use building with 51,000 square feet of office space, 5,000 square feet of retail space here. There's 9,000 square foot co-working office space attached to that, along with a four-story parking deck that contains 281 stalls to support the uses here. And then the building off to the southern end of the property is a four-story building with 54,000 square feet of office space and 2,700 square feet of retail space. Similar to the residential, in combination with the deck and at-grade parking, we meet the parking requirement in total for the combined space of the office and retail being proposed. The, from a circulation, as we're talking of parking, we move the circulation and movements throughout the site. If you're to drive the site today, you'll see really mainly just a two or three curb cuts along Jersey Avenue, main, all called main curb cuts, however, there's a lot of other, I'll call it cuts, there's a lot of loading docks that come out to Jersey Avenue from the existing buildings, structures that are there, so there's obviously a lot of movement of trucks moving in and out of the buildings, particularly on the northern end of the site. We're taking, along the Jersey Avenue frontage, the residential will have only two curb cuts where my two fingers are on the plan right now, basically to either side of what I'm calling the southern residential building. And then there are two curb cuts for the non-residential portion, right on the northern edge of the northernmost building, in between the southernmost building and the parking area. There's one other driveway that is located off of Sanford Avenue as well, and that helps to provide circulation throughout. It's two-way circulation, providing at a minimum of 20-foot wide drive aisles. We do, in our plan, deviate from the code with respect to widths of the driveway. Two locations, however, you can point that out, one is at the boulevard, so if you look in detail on our plan, we have this driveway with separate in and out movements, but it's separated by a landscaped island along the middle. So while the drive lanes themselves are actually only 15 feet in width each, and if we added that together, that would comply, when we add in the island in between, it stretches out a portion of the pavement to 35 feet, right, right in this area here, so technically it's over, so we need a waiver with respect to the driveway width, but that's due to the addition of the amenity for the landscaping. And then on the southern end of the property, in the southernmost driveway, for the non-residential, we have a deviation there, it's 32.9 feet in width, and that's because we needed to provide an additional radius to assist with what we expect to be a small box truck to come in, so we use the radius of the truck. We needed to do that and widen the driveway a bit to make sure we had safety movements in and out, so we have a deviation there, just a few feet. The example as well, pedestrian circulation being shown within this plan, so you'll see along the entire front of Jersey Avenue, new sidewalk that also runs along Sanford, and that also then interconnects between all the proposed residential buildings, and there's then also connection, obviously, to each one of the non-residential buildings now, so that's, that's a big improvement compared to what's out there today. Just to skip one more point with respect to circulation, engineer, and if you follow us here, we can talk more about the permitting and what we're dealing with the county, because there are some additional improvements that are being proposed design-wise to improve the intersection of Sanford and Jersey Avenue. But, you know, we've been working in conjunction with the county on this plan, moving back and forth with respect to that, and the cellular provides some additional detail. If I move from circulation and from pedestrian vehicles, we can move into grading and stormwater, typically where I go next.
Mr. Skapinetz, Brett, before you move on, just before you get to stormwater drainage, regarding parking, you noted that not only does the project comply with the code, but it actually exceeds the requirements, that's my understanding?
It does, it does, yes.
This proposal also includes the electric vehicle charging requirements that are state mandated now, correct?
That is correct.
With regard to the non-commercial, I'm sorry, the non-residential component, the commercial component, you identify Mile Run, which is that water, you know, course and the natural feature that's already on the property. Your office has worked with DRCC with this application process, correct?
Right.
It's my understanding throughout the process, they've required the configuration, reconfiguration of that component to meet their needs.
That's correct, yep. We not only have DRCC, but also have DEP, so we have, we have two components here. And anytime we go into a site plan, we know we're going to DRCC, it's one of the first people we talk to, and then DEP as well, because we obviously have to juggle their requirements and get them on board, because as you know, you know, once action is taken and we, by the local board, that's when we go ahead and go forward, so we need to get our ducks in a row with DRCC first, and make sure they're, you know, good with the plan, so we think we know you're approving something, you should do approve this plan, you're approving something that is, is in line with what the DRCC and DEP and that for that matter is looking for.
So what you're presenting this evening is a culmination or result of the work that you had already performed with DRCC and the DEP?
That's right.
And that includes the commercial component, which my understanding has been scaled back at the request of DRCC?
That's right.
To limit the amount of disturbance and protect those natural features?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, and just to go further with that, and particularly on the DEP side, there are, there is a floodplain associated with Mile Run, so we need to meet the rules of zero net fill within the floodplain of Mile Run. So in doing that, we have, and you'll, if you look at our grading plan, you'll see that there is, behind from the back edge of these buildings and the back edge of the parking lot of the non-residential, there is essentially a drop-off. It's more, more prominent in around the parking area than with the buildings, but there is that drop-off because this property does, it really in all directions does naturally drop down towards Mile Run, who would make, that would make sense, even for the non-residential portion, that property is sloping down from north to south direction, towards Mile Run, that's where the water is heading naturally. So with why there's a drop-off there and re-grading in that plan is because we need to meet that 0% net fill requirement, so we're showing no new fill in the floodplain to meet their requirements. But at the same time, I'll just jump right into stormwater, you know, this work that we were doing with this plan and talking with DEP, we all know that the DEP has new stormwater regulations that have been out for, really started in 2014, they were updated last year. We are, as a result of this plan, actually reducing impervious coverage, so particularly particular impervious coverage. Obviously, if you looked at the aerial plan, if we go back to A1, there's a lot of, there's a lot of paved space throughout the, for basically existing conditions. So a significant reduction in that helps with water quality. Overall, reducing impervious helps with the volume, so we do fully comply, making, by doing that, that just inherently makes the stormwater condition better, because we're reducing water and we're enhancing the quality. Now, one of the points back to DRCC and why we met with them first, DRCC has its own set of rules on top of DEP when it comes to stormwater, and as a result, where if we didn't have DRCC, we wouldn't have had heavier, additional treatment of the stormwater. You will see in our plan that at the various discharge points, and there's about five of them in the plan in Mile Run, just before every discharge point where water is being collected off of pavement surfaces, we have additional treatment devices put in place. So, and that's, and that's something that the request of, of DRCC essentially is going to require. So that's really a stormwater step way, we're, we're really good there, and that even, even falls in play with local ordinance as well as the county and what we're doing with respect to stormwater and how it impacts Jersey Avenue.
And utilities, your office has analyzed the appropriate utility capacities and services for this project of this size, and you're comfortable, in your professional opinion, that the utilities exist for this project?
Yeah, obviously the utilities are there when it comes, when it comes to the existing commercial uses that were there, so we're making those tie-ins, the capacities are there. We did have some preliminary discussions with fire and, and local utility companies in the city, and we, we don't object to their comments, we'll be making some revisions to comply and make some changes to, we have waterline size adjustments to make, but we have no objection to any of those, don't see any, any issue. I do want to point out just a unique thing with utilities, also that this plan is working with it. We have Mile Run to deal with, the agencies, agencies to deal with, but there are a couple, two large sewer easements that actually run through this property, as well as a New Jersey Transit access easement that runs through this property, which we're all maintaining as a result of this development as well. So, you know, we've got a bunch of puzzle pieces to work with here to get around, and one is there's a large easement running along the back of the property that, that runs down along Mile Run, it's a line from north of Brunswick that comes into the property, and like, because it's treated by the city, there's an agreement there, and then there's another main that runs along the back of the property, the other side of Mile Run, and connects across, like I noted before, there is the, there's an access easement which comes off the northernmost driveway of the non-residential and runs back to the railroad tracks. One thing to point out with respect to that piece, and, and I should have noted it before we talked about the cellular antenna. It's important to point out the other site feature, which is right in that, where my pen is, and right off that northern driveway for the non-residential, that's the point where the new cell tower is being proposed. Where it was proposed, right about where my pen is on the plan today, we're moving it to this location here. That water tower is over 140 feet in height. This proposed cell tower, at its tallest point, which is the top of a lightning rod, is 118 feet, so it's lower than what's out there today where the, where the cell, cell units are, and the top of the tower itself is 111 feet. There's a, sorry, it's 119 feet in total, and it's 111 feet to the top of the tower, so there's an eight-foot lightning rod on top. That's where it's located, there will be an access easement for that. That tower is only accessed once every three months, once it's, once it's in place, and currently, my understanding is Verizon is building a tenant on that tower.
Thank you. Mr. Skapinetz, I apologize if I missed it, you talked about access to the residential component of the driveway curb cuts, did you also talk about access to the commercial? I apologize if I missed that.
I did, yes, yes, I did, I talked to, to both, and I mentioned the driveway on the southern end, we needed the waiver there, but one thing I can point out, again, with the access, once you get into the site, it's similar to the residential, where we have the ability for vehicles to circulate properly through, if they come to the southern edge, there's a one-way drive aisle leading them around to the office building, but also to be able to circulate through to the parking garage, the park, and then walk to either one of the office or retail.
You noted the significant reduction in impervious coverage, as part of this redevelopment as mandated by the redevelopment plan, there will be an open space park included as part of this development. Can you just, for the board and the public, for their benefit, identify where on the exhibit that park would be located?
Yeah, this is, this is, would be on the east side of Mile Run. So the area right now has a, there are a couple crossings to it, or we're looking at, there's one right behind where the parking garage is, where my pen is shown now, and would provide pedestrian access to be able to walk into that area, it's just over four acres in size, and we are showing walking paths around the perimeter of that, but I do want to note that part of a future revision we are intending, again, I note that this area is under, again, full jurisdiction with DRCC and DEP as well, we will run this by them, but our intention is that Verizon is additional improvements by way of an open active field and potentially a playground area as well, and we also want to introduce some additional solar lighting, just to provide it along the pathway.
And obviously, that's something that's subject to the jurisdiction of the DRCC, like the, those structures can be in a flood area if we're playing, but on the next revision that goes into the DRC, you'll show those enhanced improvements in addition to the walking paths that you're showing already.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I did talk about lighting, we do have a mix of mobile building mount fixtures and area light fixtures. Obviously, the interior of the garages will be lit, the parking area, the ground parking areas are lit through mainly through 58 light poles, they're LED lights of about 12 feet in height. The building lights, in combination with those area lights, meet the ordinance requirements when it comes to the known light levels needed with respect to the parking areas being proposed.
And Mr. Skapinetz, you've reviewed, I know your office participated in all of the technical advisory meeting meetings with the City of New Brunswick, but you've also received the most recent reports from the board's consultants?
I did, I just wanted to, just one more thing after that, just on the landscaping portion of the plan. If you go through, the corridor along the stream is vegetated, and we're not able to touch that, there's going to be some cleanup around there, however, I did note some grading on the other side, but once we're, once we're completing that, we will be enhancing the landscaping dramatically. So just some numbers to throw by, we've got a total in the, in the plan currently, and this doesn't include the landscaping amenity areas that are going to be cleaned up within the buildings themselves, just outside the buildings. We've got 200, almost 300 shade trees, 150 ornamental trees, 230 evergreen trees, there's, and there's upwards of 1,200 additional shrubs and plantings, and when you look at the plant lot, shrub, the entire perimeter of all the residential buildings, even the, even the non-residential buildings have at least a lot of shrubs around them, and supplemental trees to add to it. There is one point that you want to bring up with respect to the landscaping, and it's a deviation that was called out, you know, I'll wait till the planner letter, we can hit that when we get there.
Sure.
And I think that would cover my direct.
Do you want to move now into the reports that we were seeing?
Yeah, we can do that.
Sure. Why don't we start with Mr. Burke's report, it's dated for the record July 11, 2022. I believe the first pages are the recitation of the project and summaries, there are some general comments and recommendations set forth on page five. Want to take that?
Sure.
Give you a moment to scan through those, I know we've reviewed them prior, see if there's any comments that require response, or if your office is comfortable with all of those requests and recommendations.
Yeah, so in review letter, I do just want to touch base, this goes back to lighting, this would be on page five, number eight, there's a request for Mr. Burke to just give some additional testimony with regards to lighting and other, to any other deviations to city standards. I noted the minimum one foot handle, one foot handle, that, that meets the requirement, it's called out in Mr. Bignell's, the Bignell planning letter. But, you know, what, what we do look at, there are a couple ratios of lighting there where we might not meet the requirement, that's a minimum illumination ratio at the parking lot. We have a 66 to 1 ratio, or 15 to 1 is required, and normally that occurs, which is this case, in fact, we don't have enough, we've got a small area we're covering, so it's a tight area, so to get that ratio up, what ends up happening is we have a couple lights in that area, and it just brings the intensity up a little bit higher. And then the maximum illumination level permitted at the property line, there's 4.8 foot handles proposed, it says 0.25 foot handle maximum permitted. Now, this is, two, two ways we're relying, really on our lighting that we're providing along that front walkway into buildings, and we have the building up in the street, and really, it's hard to be able to get 0.25. We're not going to get 0.25, so we really need to have that waiver in order to have safe lighting along the front walkway, and because we're uptight, it's a narrow property from north, east to west, as you see, you know, we've got parking and circulation areas are very close to those, inches of those properties, it's not uncommon to see a ratio like that in this case, so that's the reason for the waiver, that was, those would be the only two deviations per the, outside of the redevelopment plan or ordinance with respect to the lighting.
No other problems following the remaining recommendations of Mr. Burke in his report? No other problems following the remaining recommendations of Mr. Burke in his report?
Just, two others. Circle, just to make sure, I do want to know about the phasing of the project, that was noted in Mr. Burke's letter. So, the intention, should it will be granted, would be to start with what the building, the residential building to the north and the parking deck, the phase one, we would also build the Boulevard driveway, the Sanford driveway, as part of phase one. Phase two would be the construction of the two, the parking deck and the northernmost non-residential building, along with the two drive aisles and parking areas, that would be phase two. Phase three would be to go in, go build the second residential building and the driveway to the south of it, that secondary drive to Jersey Avenue for the, for the residential. And then the last phase would be to build a building, so we're proposing up the four phases with respect to the plan.
And just to supplement Mr. Stappanett's testimony, because this is a redevelopment project, as I noted in my overview, that's governed by a redevelopment plan that's been executed with the city of Brunswick, that redevelopment plan has a phasing schedule that's very consistent with what Mr. Stappanett specified too, and it requires that a certain component of the commercial be built before the next residential phase. So, it's sort of a flip plot back and forth between residential, commercial, residential, commercial, to make sure that the project moves the synergy between what's being built. So, in addition to what Mr. Stappanett specified to, we do have a phasing schedule, we have to conform with according to our redevelopment plan.
The only other comment, Mr. Burke, sorry, was just to talk about security. We have a good lighting plan to provide safety for residents living, or even, you know, customers visiting or workers in and on residential streets. But added to that, there will be security cameras added, and then there, we will, we don't have exactly what the mechanism will be, but there will be a means of securing the residential parking deck as well for vehicles going in and out of there. So, we do intend to provide those measures within the plan. That was all I have with respect to Mr. Burke's letter, that's all.
Would you like to, I don't know if there's many engineering comments left in Mr. Bignell's report dated July 12, 2022, but if there's anything in this report that requires your response, by all means, feel free to provide that. I know we do have other witnesses this evening, architect and traffic engineer as well, we're planning, I will hit majority of these items as well.
Just to go further, July 12. I do, I only just, I want to hit a couple items. I talked to the driveway with, I mentioned that we are not asking for impervious coverage variances, we're going to meet 65%, the 67.4, and our plan was computed assuming that the areas in the center of the buildings would be only hardscaped, we didn't have an idea of what was going to be there, so we were conservative and said, let's go that route. We've since looked at a landscape plan, have a mock-up of one, and we know that we're going to be able to add more green space in here to reduce it, and at least meet the 65%, probably less than 65%. So, I'll say that we do not need the variance for the 65. The, only other item that I want to clarify would be on page four, B, the parking lots, there's a requirement for the parking deck for the residential to be fully screened, and we do believe we're meeting that intent. With the exception of a small area, if you were driving along Jersey Avenue and you happen to be looking left or right along this corridor, we're providing screening to the deck, the buildings screen the deck, you can't see it. So, I believe we're meeting that intent. Furthermore, along the back of the property, from a screening standpoint, obviously we just have the railroad tracks there, but we have a double row of evergreen trees running along that entire edge providing screening, and the grade rises up from there, so we're also, we believe we're meeting intent. I did want to clarify, the bicycle parking, G, at the very bottom, it talks about the short-term, so for long-term, I'm sorry. No, we do, we do show, we show short-term racks at the, at the non-residential, so they're in the plan, near the southern, at the southern building, so I just want to call that, that is there. I did want to call it on signage, 7A, we do not believe we're in violation of the signs because we are, we, there are two signs proposed at Jersey Avenue, one at Jersey Avenue and one at Sanford, we are allowed one per frontage, we have two signs on the residential parcel, but it is one per frontage, so we believe we're meeting that. And I want to go back to the landscaping or screening in the back of the deck, and Todd, if you can clarify this for me, I believe the requirement is to have a mix of trees and shrubs, what we're doing along the back, and that's the intent along the buffer between the deck and the property line, but we're just proposing not shrubs, but a double stacked row of trees, which we believe is a better enhancement. I just want to be clear that we were interpreting it correctly, that that's, we were technically the code calls for trees and shrubs, but we're in violation because we're just putting trees.
Yeah, I believe technically you'd be violation, but I think the intent, the higher row specimen is going to be much better.
Right, it's going to be a much better screening with a double stack of those, so just to make sure we clarify that. On D, on the third item, it talks about parking lot minimum, 10% overall landscaping, and says 5% provided for surface lot, lots, but in our calculations and our chart, we do say we're meeting the 10%, we ran the calculation, so I believe we're meeting the intent of the words there. Let's move to page E, which is related to providing some testimony just regards to the operations. So, for resident, the residential portion of the property, if you look at, I'll call it the Boulevard Drive for the residential, there are a couple lanes that are proposed, which are essentially loading spaces, which, you know, for your FedEx, your UPS, FedEx that needs to be dropped off, there's another one in the back of the southernmost residential building, so we provided those areas, that's where they would take place, and, you know, the, obviously, the worker for UPS, FedEx would be able to walk into the building and provide that, deliver the packages. Similarly, truck, the other type of vehicle, trucks, especially on the residential line coming in, is going to be from a trash pickup standpoint. We have two trash enclosures, there's one located where my pen is, on the east, between the two portions of the northernmost residential structure, and there's one on the southeast end of the site for the garbage collection for the southernmost residential building. We're expecting, there's going to be onsite supervisor maintenance that will come in. We're at a minimum looking at three times a week for trash to be picked up. Basically, that trash is collected from inside at a central location, inside the building, and then haul out to there for, for pickup by collection. It's private hauler, can be, obviously, if it's more than three times a week, it will be arranged as necessary depending on the flow of trash to those areas. The non-residential is essentially the same thing, less intense, but we do have the trash pickup done for those units as well in a similar manner.
Mr. Stappanett, going back to the Boulevard and the loading, your description of the lanes, those are actually shoulders or bumpouts where the vehicles, an Amazon vehicle or FedEx pull off and not block traffic.
And not block, right, and in front of those loadings, those parallel loading stalls, there are, there's also prompt street parking for residents as well. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Stappanett. Board members, I have nothing further for the witnesses.
Mr. Chair, could we recognize? I know we approved, or we counsel an agreement for the execution when you go to build a traffic, between the city and county and yourselves. What phase is the project, is that going to be completed?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Foley, but my, my guess is going to be, it's going to really be part of phase one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks.
I have a question. Who's going to be responsible for maintenance of the park space? And if it's not you?
Yeah, I, I'm going to, I want to.
We'll come back, we'll have one other witness. Thank you.
Congratulations, park space. Is this, you said it's public space, is it open to the public?
It is.
And where would folks live or work here, Clark, if they want access to that?
You know, they, they, yeah, they could either be walking, walking to that area from off-site parking, or, you know, again, during the middle of the day, it's going to be, you know, off, I'll call it off-peak, especially for residential, where there's going to be more people the hour parking, there are more space available, we'll get hours where it's open really only from dusk to dawn, we're trying, we're looking at limited hours for its, for its use, we post it that way. So, it'd be a combination of whatever is along the streets in the area, and or if there's parking that may be available on site.
Mr. Stappanett, the parking testimony provided earlier, this project's actually providing in excess of what the residential and the commercial require?
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely so, and I can give you those numbers just quickly, we're required for the residential portion, 1,232 spaces, we're providing 1,270, so we have an extra 38 spaces for the non-residential, for the residential, sorry, for the, non-res, for the residential, for the non-residential lot, the total required is 299, and we have 316, so we have 17 more spaces there, so that's 55 spaces more in total than we need that could be utilized by other people.
Anyone in public.
All right. It's, it's open, sure, and if they have the ability to park there, they could do that. I have some other questions, but I'm never quite sure. We have, the, okay, let me clarify one thing, too, we did talk about the security for the deck, mind you, that's one, the one part that might be absent, remember, the deck is going to be for the, is pushing for the, for the residents, would be, we're expecting there to be some security there for that, so at a minimum, that's, you have those 1,170 for the residential. So, you know, if you're worried about there not being space, that's, those are the ground level spaces where during the course of the day, there's some opening ones, and the parking is dragged through, grabs a spot, and people walk over there, that's what I expect.
And I just want to make sure that, you know, you have no access to it by anyone with residence, that it will be an open, rest of the.
Understood.
Completely different, I noticed in the LSRP report, you said, you're going to hold a reference to potential for mayhem, intrusion from groundwater contamination false sites. Could you comment on that, is that something which is going to be remediated, or something in testing that's going to be monitored?
I, I can't comment on the final plan, but I can tell you that the intention here is to do whatever is needed to comply with the environmental standards of the state to ensure that residential development is done, whether it be through active or passive remediation, it will be, it will be done in accordance with, with.
And there is, I can, as the applicant's attorney, there is an LSRP, a licensed site remediation professional actively working on the site, who prepared a report that was supplied to Mr. Burke.
That's right, that's right.
And to Mr. Stappanett's point, that's the individual responsible to oversee the full remediation to the satisfactory of the decision.
I also say this, we drive to almost every site that comes in front of us, the content of the plantings, you know, I think, you know, I think it's incumbent on our developers to be made to incorporate to the extent possible, all native plantings, so he's going to be done, not only to better the environment, but less maintenance for them, a property owner. Now, hopefully, that is a condition of the approval, if it's already incorporated to the plan.
We can agree, you agree that, and if you were those to make that as a condition, we wouldn't object, that's fine, we'll make sure it's a daily maintenance.
Okay. Any other questions from board members or others? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stappanett. Our next witness would be Andrew Jafola, our traffic engineer.
Can you please state your name, spell your last name for the records?
Andrew Jafola, J-A-F-O-L-L-A.
Can you square it for us, I'll look into that thing about the.
I do.
What is yours? Thank you. Foley, for the benefit of the board and public, your education, area of expertise and the licenses you hold, sir?
Sure. I'm a professional engineer, licensed in New Jersey, I'm also a professional traffic operations engineer, international certification, that's a nation-wide. I'm a principal at Dynamic Traffic, I've been practicing in the traffic engineering community on both the private and the public side, on a former career over 15 years now. I graduated of Rutgers University, and I'm here to talk about the problem.
I would offer Mr. Jafola as an expert in the field of engineering traffic.
Thank you.
Mr. Jafola, you worked with the crew at Dynamic Civil to prepare the site plan, which included some traffic analysis, and you submitted to the city as well as the agencies and the board's consultants a traffic impact study.
That's correct.
And you're prepared this evening to provide the results of your findings for that study?
Yes. So, well, before I get to this, I'd like to just give an overall view of this project, you know, Mr. Stappanett's did a great job talking about the project interior, I just want to give an overall view of how this project interacts with the roadway, specifically the offsite, so you have a high-level view. So, as we talk about this, north of this to the left of this sheet, there was some discussion about offsite improvements associated with this project, that, that improvement is the signalization of the intersection of Sanford and Jersey Avenue. Not only are we looking to signalize that intersection, Jersey Avenue will be widened to provide dedicated left-turn lanes along Jersey Avenue, both, in both directions, to Sanford Avenue, either coming towards the site or in the opposite direction. In addition to the offsite improvements there for signalization and the widening, we're also going to be reconstructing the sidewalk generally in all locations, we're from widening. So, the existing sidewalk, not only along our front edge and our corner, but the other three quadrants of the intersection, that sidewalk will be reconstructed, pedestrian amenities, curb ramps, pedestrian signals with countdown timers, push buttons, a very modern traffic signal. In addition to those features, this signal will be capable of, will be equipped with a battery backup, so in advance of power failure, the signal will continue to run. It will possess emergency preemption in accordance with the city standards and image detection, so this is a very up-to-date signal, fully modern, in accordance with county standards, and not only accommodating vehicular traffic, but pedestrian traffic. In addition, we are also widening along the site frontage for the commercial portion at the southernmost driveway. That driveway services the vast majority of the parking for the commercial portion of development. We'll be widening along the frontage to provide dedicated left-turn lanes into that site, both in the southbound direction and the northbound direction. And one point to note here is that not only does this obviously benefit the site by providing a dedicated left-turn lane, this would also provide dedicated left-turn lane into Clark, which is opposite of that driveway, so benefiting the residents that just may approach directly the cost. In addition, something that we don't see here, which, just kind of jumping ahead here, the county has asked to install curb ramps and a crosswalk across Jersey Avenue at Clark, so that is a future, we talked about access to the, to the passback on Mile Run, that crosswalk is going to provide better accessibility, where you can cross Jersey Avenue at Clark and get into those park features. From an operational perspective of the remaining driveways, the county was very adamant that they did not want to see dedicated or left-turn movements. that they did not want to see dedicated or left-turn movements into any of the driveways without the benefit of a left-turn lane. And for that reason, and that is a large portion of the reason why we have the signal and the dedicated left-turn lanes at Sanford, because if you're coming south on Jersey Avenue, that is gonna be a left-turn movement into the site, and you would not be permitted to make a left-turn lane, or left-turn movement into the driveway of the residential. Similarly, at commercial, for the commercial property, the county had concerns, they wanted to make sure that we have a dedicated left-turn lane, so that when someone is making a left end, they're not holding up traffic behind them, and that's the reason why you see the widening along the frontage should provide that left-hand turn movement. And similar condition for that reason, left-end turn, left-turn movements into the northernly driveway for the commercial portion would not be permitted. So, you know, overall, I wanted to go through that, because I just wanted you to understand that we've thought about this a lot, and really worked with the county back and forth, the fact that they're asking us to put in curb ramps and crosswalks. You know, we're providing widening in response to their comments and concerns, and the city was very interested in seeing the signalization at Sanford. So there's been a lot of dialogue back and forth between our team and the county to really get to where we are today. So, and again, going to the traffic study, just to kinda get into some of the details, from an operational perspective, what really backs up all of these improvements that you see here, we have counts that were conducted in 2019, April 2019, which was before the pandemic. As everyone's aware, the pandemic did impact traffic conditions. So while, at the time, we were preparing the study, it wasn't really advisable to take new counts. It was really better to rely on those counts that were taken just before the pandemic, and that's reliable. But what we did do, to really make sure that that baseline data is represented, is we looked at two other sources. You know, by the time we had prepared this, we were kinda very far along, we had done the study, but actually, earlier in 2022, the county did ask us to go out and take updated counts. They felt that, you know, the traffic volumes had normalized, and they wanted to just kinda take a reading of that. And we did that, and we did that in January 2022. We also looked at a traffic study that was done for the, I believe it's the Lincoln Annex School, which is under construction currently just to the northwestern Jersey Avenue. They had traffic counts in the Jersey Avenue corridor as well. So we compared our 2019 counts to new counts that we did in 2020, as well as traffic counts that were in that traffic study. What we found is that our traffic counts that we used in this study from 2019 were the highest among all of them, so we have a very, a level of certainty with those traffic counts that we used for this study. So as part of doing the traffic study, not only do we look at this project, we try to get an understanding of what other projects are happening in the area, we wanna make sure we build them into the traffic volumes. So with that, we did look at the traffic study that was prepared for the, again, the school that is under construction just to the north of us, as well as there's a cancer center that is under construction, and a project known as Plum Two. So we acquire the traffic studies for those projects, we look at the traffic volumes that would come through the Jersey Avenue corridor, and we make sure to include them in our baseline information when we did our analysis. So, and the last step we do is we project the traffic associated with this site. And I don't wanna go into a lot of detail, there's a lot of things that go into that, and I'll give you just in general, a high-level view. We utilize the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It is the resource that all traffic engineers in the country go to project traffic for developments that are not yet constructed. Now, one inherent issue with that at times, it is not always representative of the word individual project. And the reason I say that here is, you know, here, we're in a different kind of environment we have, we're providing a lot of bike storage, that we're providing means for alternative transportation, we're more of an urban environment, where although people are going to have vehicles, they might not be as relying on them, they might be more likely to walk or bike, or use ride share, other forms of transportation. And we also are, you know, proposing uses, albeit not connected with our parking facilities, they are approximately to each other, where people could walk between those uses. You could envision a scenario where someone works and live in the residential portion and work in the office portion. There is some retail components in this site, where they would, instead of needing to use their personal vehicle, they could utilize the sidewalk that is being shut along Jersey Avenue to get to the site. So when we did our analysis, the rates that we use are representative of a typical suburban standalone development of each of these individual uses. So really, and the reason I'm saying this, is it really maximizes the generation that we loaded into this analysis, providing a very conservative analysis when we ran that. So when we run all this analysis, at each of the driveways, level of service C or better during all of the peak hours, again, utilizing those very conservative numbers, and the baseline traffic volumes that have been vetted out to other sources. When we look at this intersection, you know, an argument could be made that you don't need the signal. That being said, when you put the signal on, it operates great. You have the left-turn lanes that are being proposed, they're gonna accommodate all the left-turning vehicles, you're not gonna see left-turning vehicles that are spilling out of that storage into the through lanes. And people are gonna get to the signal, they're gonna wait a reasonable amount of time for the green indication to go. So level of service C, B, generally here, you know, during the morning rush hour, you may experience level of service C when you're coming out of Sanford, because you have the residents leaving the lane for the commute, but beyond that, a very good operation for the traffic signal. And that really, you know, that concludes my testimony with regard to traffic operations and some of the off-site. I think there was a comment in Mr. Burke's letter, just speaking about the construction of the improvements at this intersection, there's also a question of the phasing. So, kinda, there's two generally go together here. You heard Mr. Stappanett describe the phasing of the project, which included this residential building in the southeast quadrant, as well as the parking garage. Part of those improvements is gonna include a pedestrian plaza in the quadrant, our quadrant of the intersection, sidewalk improvements along both sides. And part of the signalization requires that intersection to be widened to accommodate the left-turn lane. So it really makes sense that you would construct this traffic signal and associated improvements in phase one. The answer that I cannot give you, which is gonna be governed by the county, is exactly at what time the signal will be activated. But what I can tell you is that the applicant is gonna have every incentive to activate it as soon as possible, because if they have to start construction with phase one because of the corner work here, the last thing they wanna do is sit around waiting for someone to tell them they can turn on the signal. So they're very incentivized to get that signal on as quickly as possible. My experience, I would expect the county would say, as soon as you can erect the signal equipment, and you have the heads up, you'll be able to turn it on. So I would anticipate that that goes with phase one. That being said, from a traffic perspective, from an operations perspective, this signal, as I mentioned earlier, is borderline even being needed with the full buildout of the project. So even if this were an agreement to phase two before it were to get activated, say in the case of a material delay in delivering traffic signal equipment to the site, and those sorts of things, this signal would operate just fine if it were to get delays better. And the reason I wanted to bring that up is, in the signal industry, there is very significant delays that are being associated with equipment. Three years ago, I would never talk about this in the planned forehearing, but I just have to say it out loud, in case that were to happen, that that is gonna be fine, and without a signal if it reaches past phase one, if it's still. And do you have to answer any questions?
Before we open up to questions, Mr. Jafola, and thank you for your testimony, this design is again the culmination of your work from a traffic perspective in dealing with the county, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And the proposal, if approved by this board, you're comfortable that this would be the project that would make its way to the final finish line with the county without significant changes?
That's correct. And just to expand on that a little bit, we did just receive comments from the county. We're still working our way through them, but from the traffic signal perspective, the traffic perspective, we're really talking about technical comments at this time. Change a sign here, make sure you have the left-turn restriction signage at the, at the driveways aren't signaled, that's the level of comments that we're working through right now, and we also have administrative items. There was mention of the traffic signal agreement that needs to get dealt with. So we're really at the end with the county, when we're talking about the level improvement and the technical details of it.
So the road widening improvements that you've identified, the sidewalk and the traffic signal, that has been vetted with the county, and that's baked into the plan that the board has before them this evening for consideration?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jafola. I have nothing further, Chairman.
I have a question. The crosswalk had, did you ask me to turn it with flashing crosswalk?
I talked about the rapid, the rectangles. It would have to be subject approval of the county, but I think if, yeah, if they were to allow it, I don't think it would be allowed. Yeah, they would just need to be solar-powered, you know, we would, maybe solar-powered.
Jafola, I apologize if you may have said this, I was taking some notes. Could you talk about Sanford being converted to a two-way?
No, I didn't speak about that. It wasn't present in the letter, but I can speak to it. So Sanford is currently one-way in the eastbound direction. I'm sorry, one-way out of the intersection in the westbound direction towards French. There was some discussion about potentially converting that road to two-way direction. While the width closest to Jersey Avenue would appear that it accommodated, off the sheet at the intersection of Sanford and French, it narrows down, you can't accommodate two lanes of traffic at that location. So what we've done in response to that comment is we've actually played out the traffic signal in such a way that if, as part of a future project by others, the intersection at French and Sanford were to be corrected to accept that traffic coming towards the intersection, it would just be a matter of mounting two additional traffic signals that would need to go out and change a bunch of foundations and mass arms, to accommodate it as much as we can.
Thank you.
There's a new signal associated with the school also, correct?
Yes.
And did your traffic analysis take that into consideration?
Yes, we looked at, well, number one, the traffic signal habit is gonna be built with the brands to be able to coordinate with that traffic signal, and that one will be built with the brands to coordinate with this one. I anticipate that that's gonna be something that's dealt with in construction, depending on the status of that signal on this one. I do envision that they'll hopefully be coordinated, and we did look at them in the coordinated aspect, and they would work, there would actually benefits of Florida.
It's only a block to Clark, right?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, it's at Hale, I believe, but it's three blocks away. Yes, so Jersey Avenue and Hale is three blocks.
You noted the entrances off Jersey Avenue into the site, the residential portion are right in and right out only.
That's correct.
That, in my mind, makes the signalization of Sanford important. You spoke about perhaps it being tied to phase one. Would the applicant be amenable to making, making the activation of that signal tie into a phase or a number of COs, residential COs, so that there is an ability for residents to make a left-out of the site? I think that, I think that's important, I think it's commonly done, and perhaps that could be worked out between the city and the county as to what, what point or what CO limit it'd be, but I think, as you mentioned, you've got 660 residential units, it's gonna generate a fair amount of peak hour traffic, and I believe you need to tie the activation at like to some level of residency.
Yeah, I think that would be relevant, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jafola. Our next witness is the project architect, Maurice Mead. And while Mr. Mead is saying, I just wanted to circle back to the board, and I believe the chairman, I may have asked a question, I did get the answer. Maintenance of the park is solely the obligation, the constant responsibility of the developer, the redevelopment, that will be maintained by redevelopment solely. Go on.
Please state your names, tell your last name for the record.
Maurice Mead, first name, N-E-U-R-I-C-E, M-E-A-D.
Do you swear or pronounce anything?
I do.
Mr. Mead, for the benefit of the board and public, your education, area of expertise, and the licenses you hold, sir?
I am a graduate of Andrews University, a professional five-year bachelor of architecture. I have licenses from Connecticut, New Jersey, Virginia, DC, as well as New Jersey.
Your licenses are still standing, including New Jersey?
Currently, yes.
I would offer Mr. Mead as an expert in the field of architecture, Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Mead, I know you have a number of exhibits and boards. For purposes of presentation, if any of the boards are simply a mounted version of what we've published, and the board members have in their plans, I don't think we need to introduce them. If it's something different, then we can continue to mark them as exhibits, but if it's simply a sheet of the plans that hasn't been altered, just refer to the sheet of the plans, and the board members can follow them.
I will. Should I share the 11x17s?
Again, if there are new exhibits, yes, but if it's what's in the packets, I don't see the need.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As everybody's discussing the project, we have three very distinct buildings throughout the site, as far as the residential experience. We have the building 1A here, 1B, and 2, building 2. Both are all interconnected as far as 1A and 1B. We have a bridge that connects the buildings. At the third and fourth floors, building 1A, it's 215 units. Building 1B is 213 units, and building 2 is 232 units. As I was mentioning, building 1A and 1B are connected with a bridge. Building 2 as well has a bridge that's connecting to the far wing here. We refer to that in the drawings as building 2B.
And that sheet, A001 of the plan set that was submitted to this board?
Correct, that is the first sheet. There is also a parking structure, which you will see, that's connected to the buildings. At the third floor, we have the bridge that connects the garage structure. There is also a variety, as has been discussed, of site surface parking, central delivery areas between building 1A and 1B, as we discussed. There is also a delivery space at building 2, in the rear portion of the property. We also have the three office buildings. We've discussed one single structure, a four-story structure, as well as two office spaces, four-story high, that are interconnected with four stories of parking structure. Next, exhibit 82002. This is more of a close-up view of what we've been discussing. I'd like to mention the trash locations that are shared spaces between the building 1A and 1B, as well as a loading space. And then the building 2, we also have a space in the back for loading as well.
Mr. Mead, the number of units you identify, you described the number of units in each building, it's a total of 660, correct?
That's correct.
And I just wanted to identify, I don't know if you're gonna get to in your testimony, but there was a, I believe, a typo on one of the sheets that referenced the number of affordable units. I believe it referenced 72, but the correct number is 66, correct?
Correct. Could I share the exhibit 8203?
That sheet, A003 of the plan.
8203, yes.
Correct. And that, from my understanding, referenced 72, but the correct number is 66 affordable units?
That's correct. That would be a reduction. That's correct. That would be a reduction of two bedrooms, six bedrooms from the two-bedroom category. This is our project matrix. As we were mentioning, we have a correction from 72 co-units to 66 co-units. We had an error, we're showing six too many two-bedrooms. Thank you. I'd like to show exhibit 8.102.
This is sheet A 102 from the board set?
Yes, sir. What I'd like to show here is the first floor plan. The first floor plan shows a little bit more detail than what I was showing, which was the site plans. And it shows the relationship and the interconnection between Building 1A and 1B. What you see here are the trash rooms that are located at the first floor. We have two trash rooms distributed through the building 1A. And you can see that we're able to circulate from both trash rooms to the central trash room space and loading area that is a shared space. Building 1B as well has two trash rooms that will be utilizing the central shared loading space. Sheet and exhibit 8.103, working our way up the building to the second floor. You will also see above the trash room spaces, which were on the first floor, are compaction rooms. Now you will see a smaller trash space directly above, and these are access from all the tenants, distributed through the building, so that you can come into the space, drop your trash. There'll be a chute that comes down, and there'll be an option for recycling and general trash. You'll go down to the compaction room, and then the maintenance team, as we've been discussing, will take you to the central trash location. And this is typical for the other two floors, third and fourth. You'll also see the bridge connection here from the parker structure as well.
And Mr. Mead, I know you're going to go through each floor, but just can you give the board and the public a general sense of the typical or average size of the units? I know you have studio, one and two and three bedrooms that are required under the redevelopment plan. Can you just give an overview of generally what those size ranges are for the board?
Right. Well, let's refer back to our tabulation sheet, which is very clear, and it is detailed in this regard. Typically, what you'll see is a distribution on, in every building, of the three buildings we've been discussing. You'll have a distribution of a one-bedroom, which typically runs in the range anywhere from 58 to 60 percent. And then we get into a category of a one-bedroom den or a two-bedroom. That will be in the range of 30 percent, and then we get into more of the higher square footage ranges. It would be anywhere from 1,300 to a two-bedroom. We can go back to the square footages specifically for the one-bedroom. You're around 600 square feet, range to 914. And then the one-bedroom den goes from anywhere from 940 to 1,000 square feet. So the distribution is very clear, going back to the two-bedroom, 1,100 to 1,000 range. And then the two-bedroom den, where we don't have as many, about 1 to 2, 1 percent, we're in the 1,300 range square footage.
And the affordable units are dispersed throughout the buildings, correct?
That's correct.
The buildings, do they have amenities for the residents? Can you just identify on the floor plans, whatever sheet is the most appropriate, community space or amenity space for the building occupants?
Going back down the building, specifically to Building 1A, you'll see the amenity space of course. Amenity spaces for the buildings run in the range of 6,200 to 7,300, depending on the building. And in those amenity spaces, we always will have a package room, a concierge, we'll have a lounge space. And in that space, we have a location for the residences to come in as well as visitors, and drop-off areas as well. If you'd like, I would like to go to Main Street, I'll show the amenity location of that.
And just while you're doing that, Mr. Scavon has testified to security measures for the residents to access these buildings. Will the, will there be a key fob or other device to allow residents only into the residential space, Mr. Mead?
That's correct.
And your floor plan design has included appropriate package space for the residents? We know everyone receives packages now from Amazon and the like. You've included that amenity and that ability for this building to house packages for the individual tenant?
That's correct. The average amenity space we're finding is anywhere, as I mentioned, 6,200 to 7,200 square feet, which is ample space for all of these activities. The concierge will be there 24/7, so we have full security in that regard. There is no area for any kind of insecurity for the occupants or visitors that may need access, because we have fully control of that location. We have security cameras as well that we'll be utilizing.
Mr. Mead, you were talking about going to the Main Street view, did you want to?
Yes, this is Main Street here. So as you see, we have the drop-off zones on the other side of the street. These are used for UPS, FedEx deliveries, quick drop-off packages, as well as, you know, accessibility issue, you know, when you drop somebody off. Any kind of loading aspects that need to go out in the building?
And those are the areas that Mr. Scavon has testified to, off of the boulevard in the corner?
That's correct.
Can you now talk to briefly the building exterior, the materials? I know you've provided elevations to give the board and the public just an idea of what the residential structures look like, then you can move into the commercial.
This is sheet A 1.07, if you don't mind, I'd like to pull this up to the site plan, give us a reference. This is Jersey Avenue, front elevation. As everybody can see. Jersey Avenue, you will see a variety of materials here, creating a composition. You have different elements that create vertical expressions. You have a brick and hardy panel mixed in with some glazing. And in the far perspective here, you see the bridge, and then repeat the same expression down the building. You have a variety of colors and create a nice composition and create an interest. As well as Stanford Street, we're creating the same vernacular that you see along New Jersey. Very well-presented facade.
And Mr. Mead, this building will be fully code-compliant, it'll be sprung ADA compliant, correct?
Yes, it will comply with all FPA regulations for a four-story structure. This is the rear elevation as well. You can see the quality of the design is still intact through all four sides of the elevation.
So the materials will be consistent on all four elevations?
That's correct.
Moving on to briefly the commercial component, I may have spent some time on the residential. Can you just speak to the commercial and how you design that to blend in with the residential community? And Mr. Mead, while you're looking, the residential buildings as well as all the buildings will comply with the height requirements of the redevelopment plan, correct?
That's correct.
This is sheet A 501?
01. This is a very exciting building you'll see at the far portion of the site. We're going back to the site plan, right at the entry of Jersey, New Jersey, as you come in, Jersey Ave, I should say. Four-story building, and has a typical footprint of 15,000 square feet. As you work your way through the building, at the entry point, you have a lobby space of 1,600 square feet, and a general office space of 9,000 square feet, as well as some other opportunities. You have a common area, a common core, which you see in commercial and architecture, which is the central core area of vertical circulation, your stairs, elevators. Again, this is a four-story structure, as we mentioned before.
And to the elevations, the materials for the commercial component?
So as you'll see, this is a very attractive building. It has a little bit more glazing, almost what you would expect in an office building. Utilize views in the area as well as create a nice entry, iconic architectural aspect into the site. There's more glazing, which you tend to see in commercial office space, larger bays, larger structural bays. And you open up the facade for its maximum view to the exterior, so that your core area, back to the core, can see through, and an open office will maximize the natural light.
Mr. Mead, the reports that you received from Mr. Bignell's office as well as Mr. Burke's office, you reviewed those with the team. Do you have any objections complying with the requests and recommendations?
Yes, we do. We'd like to talk about the Stanford garage facade elevation, if we could.
Okay.
Sheet A 1.02, this was shown earlier. What we're seeing here is the entry point from Stanford. The garage structure is set back significantly. So we realize in perspective on the elevation, you might see that the garage should be cladded with a screen, as we've done towards the center portion. But what we're, we'd like to express here is the relationship from Stanford in that it's not a continuous street. And it is set back significantly from the facade, as well as the residential portion of the screening that. We think that there wouldn't be a need to screen the garage based on just the approximation to Stanford.
Stanford?
Stanford, yes.
Gosh, okay. And that's, and that was a recommendation in one of the, in Mr.?
Yes.
Bignell's report? To screen the garage?
That's correct. Page four. Item B.
Partial screening right now. In your opinion, you feel that the screen that's offered is sufficient to obscure the visual aesthetic of the parking garage?
That's correct.
From the distance from Sanford, is that your testimony?
That's correct. As well as the traffic circulation, turn to you and get that location to the.
Is that the only item you wanted to clarify?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Chairman, board members, do you have nothing further for the architect and staff?
Different nature. I just wanted to clarify, you said that there was a discrepancy on the plan for the affordable housing units from 72 to 66. 66 is what is needed to qualify for the 10 percent.
That's correct.
I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you so much. That is our 10 percent requirement that we were fulfilling. Somewhere in these plans, I saw a solar unit, I'm not sure it was associated with the parking garage or whether it was associated with the building. Any comments on that? Is there a component, a solar component to this project?
The, Mr. Mead, I believe the roof.
Correct.
The roof that has solar panels, parking underneath those panels, right?
That's correct. Would you like me to bring that?
Sure.
That's sheets. Sheet A 1.002. And what you referred to is the rooftop of the structure. We do have in this hatching area, solar panels.
On the far.
Parking structure. At the top roof level of the parking structure. We have hatched and labeled the solar panel locations.
And Mr. Mead, you include that feature, not just because it's an environmentally wise idea, but also the redevelopment plan encourages green energy, renewables, and that's a requirement as part of the Sanford, Jersey Avenue, Sanford redevelopment.
That's correct.
Does that go to services, deck only, or what is the intention of that subtle angle?
We'd like to utilize it in many fashions. We haven't quite allocated where. The lighting, you know, for instance, lighting of the garage structure would be one of the most applicable ways to use it. But we might have other options that we'd like to utilize the solar power reform as well. But primarily, you would use it for lighting of the structure.
Are there the electric vehicle charge replacements, are they only in garages or are there any on the surface level lots, either at the space or in the commercial space?
They are on the surface as well as they're distributed throughout the site.
And in the commercial lot as well?
I believe we had some there to enjoy this.
I just couldn't, I'm going to just click. I confirmed with the, Mr. Scavon, that's the civil engineer, it's only in the garage for the residential only.
What about the commercial garage, the commercial parking garage?
Commercial garage as well?
Both garages, yes. Any other questions from board members or?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mead. Our final, Chairman, is our planner, Matt Flynn.
Can you please state your names to all your last names for the record?
Yeah, Matthew Flynn, FLYNA.
Do you swear or are you going to tell us if you don't have a license?
I do. Sure.
Mr. Flynn, for the benefit of the board and public, your education, area of expertise and the licenses you hold.
Right, my education comes from Rutgers, I've got my master's degree in planning and public policy. I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as my, I have my national certification. certification for planners.
And your license is in good standing?
Yeah.
I would also, Mr. Flynn is an expert planner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Flynn, you've analyzed this project from a planning perspective. You've heard the testimony this evening regarding the deviations that Mr. Stappaneth pointed out that we are seeking from the redevelopment plan. You've also are familiar with the redevelopment plan that was adopted for the Stanford redevelopment area and the city of New Brunswick master plan maintenance, correct?
Correct.
And you've established an opinion regarding this project from a planning perspective?
I have.
Can you please share your opinion?
Sure. So just to tie all the testimony together and to the intent of the redevelopment plan, just by way of background, again, we have four tax lots currently. We're going to combine those into one, splitting that in half into two properties. One of them will be residential, one of them will be non-residential. And just to quote the Jersey Sanford redevelopment plan here, the intent of the plan is to, quote, "best serve the city's need for high-quality housing, to meet market demand, replace the existing office and commercial space with newer facilities, create new open green spaces and cause the properties to be remediated from contamination should that be applicable," end quote. The redevelopment plan does also recognize that New Brunswick is a compactly developed urban area with appropriate densities to support mass and alternate transit. The redevelopment plan does give specific quotes from the New Brunswick master plan, just to go over consistency with the master plan. So these are quotes directly from the, well, actually, I won't go into that. So the redevelopment plan is consistent with both the city of New Brunswick master plan as well as the state master plan and the county master plan. Many of the goals in all of these master plans include to encourage development, redevelopment and economic growth in locations that are well situated with respect to present and anticipated public services, to reduce sprawl, and to promote development and redevelopment in a manner consistent with sound planning where the infrastructure exists per se. All of these three master plans, the city, the county, and the state, all also encourage infill development. And what I was going to say was that one of the goals of the housing plan in specifically the city of New Brunswick's master plan is, quote, "preservation of the character and stability of established residential neighborhoods," end quote. And it goes on to state, quote, "maintenance and continued improvement of the city's existing housing stock," end quote. So all of these intents of the city master plan, the city redevelopment plan, as well as the county master plan and the state master plan, all directly relate to the purposes of zoning from the municipal land use law. And the substantial conformance with the redevelopment plan, I think, implies substantial conformance with all of those master plans as well as the municipal land use law itself. So just to go through some of those purposes from the municipal land use law. Purpose A is promotion of the general welfare. We're providing new modern housing, again, to meet that high-quality housing, to meet the demand from the city of New Brunswick master plan. It's going to be a positive environment conducive to wholesome living. We're going to have spacious units. It's going to be a very attractive building, and it will include sixty-six affordable units. Purpose G of the municipal land use law is variety of land uses in appropriate locations. Again, it's a permitted use in the redevelopment plan. In substantial compliance, we're not needing any setback relief, no height relief, no density relief or anything like that. Purpose I is desirable visual environment. We saw the elevations. It's a very attractive building. It's modern and simple. Purpose M is efficient use of land. It's putting underutilized land back to active use. Again, recognizing the planning goals for infill development and reducing sprawl. So all of those positive criteria stem directly from the fact that we are in substantial compliance with the redevelopment plan. Just to go through the minimal variance relief that is needed, there's two variances related to parking deck screening, and as our engineer testified, what's actually being proposed in terms of that screening is actually better than what would be required per the redevelopment plan. For example, we do have two rows of evergreen trees as opposed to shrubs. So I think that is actually a stronger alternative, a better zoning alternative. Another variance for loading spaces, we're requiring one each for office and retail, whereas one shared space is proposed. I think that meets the actual demand of the site and to provide anything more than that would be unnecessary. And then there are a number of design waivers that were already testified to that I don't think I need to go back into. I'll just mention that they did relate to lighting at the property line, lighting ratios, and driveway width. So to get into the negative criteria for all of those variances and design waivers, basically the negative criteria deals with if there's any substantial negative impact to the public or to the zone plan. Again, there's testimony on the record regarding the safety and efficiency of the site, adequate circulation in and out of the site. There's adequate capacity of the site in terms of sewer, water, and we do have an excessive parking. And again, from a visual perspective, the fact that we don't need any relief for setbacks or density or height speaks to the fact that we do have the intended relationship with our surroundings when we look at the redevelopment plan. No substantial impact to the zone plan. Again, substantial compliance and all the relief that is needed is actually of very minor nature, and what's being proposed as an alternative is actually a better alternative in my opinion. So I think that all said, the project does comply substantially with the redevelopment plan and the master plan, satisfying the positive criteria and the negative criteria.
Mr. Flynn, I just want to follow up on a couple of points. Mr. Stappaneth talked about the proposed signs, that the two are being proposed, one on each frontage. In your opinion, as a planner, do you feel that that meets the intent and purpose of the ordinance that limits one per frontage? Do you feel that the proposal's in compliance?
I think that's in compliance, and also the impervious coverage variance we discussed will actually also be in compliance.
So that variance is going to be eliminated as Mr. Stappaneth?
Both of those variances will be eliminated, or, yeah. And also, there was another variance that is actually inapplicable, which was already discussed, which dealt with the size of the building to be planted with shrubs and trees. That's also being complied with.
Mr. Mead, the architect talked about the separation and the distance between the parking deck structure and Sanford Avenue being so far back, in his words. Do you feel that that is a justification for providing partial screening instead of the full screening required under the ordinance?
Right, yeah, it's also screened by the building itself, just based on the arrangement that's being proposed, so I think it is sufficient, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Flynn, just in summary, as a planner, this testimony that we've heard this evening, there's going to be an overall reduction in impervious coverage from existing conditions. It actually will comply with the code. There will be a remediation of any environmental issues as part of this redevelopment. There's an open space park of four acres available to the public. And finally, there's traffic signal being added to the intersection of Sanford and road widening that will not only benefit this site but neighboring areas. As a planner, do you feel that the benefits that I've just listed would outweigh any detriments associated with the minor relief?
Yeah, so the statutory criteria for C relief is, as you said, the C-two test whereby the benefits of the application outweigh any detriments, and agree, I do think so.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Chairman, I have nothing further for the planner.
Thank you. Any questions concerning the variances or anything else that was presented tonight?
Thank you, Chairman. That concludes our direct presentation. After you opened the meeting up to the public, I would just reserve the right to give a final closing statement. I know you have your professionals to speak to.
I want to ask a question. In one of the technical advisory committee meetings, I made a comment that the lot consolidation plan should be provided with plan set, and the response that was given in the June twenty-ninth letter said, "The lot consolidation plan will be provided under separate cover upon formal approval of the city planning board." Subsequent to me writing my most recent review letter, I came to learn that a lot consolidation plan had been provided, not with the most recent package, but I guess separately, and a subdivision plan, I don't know if it's been included in the record, but I think it should be included in the record tonight, and I don't know if the boards received it because the subdivision is one of the items you're asking. So I would suggest that it at least be introduced, that the board be made aware of it. If it hasn't, I don't know if they have or have not received it, and it go on the record as what the subdivision's to be.
I received it.
You received it. I didn't receive it until yesterday.
I did watch it.
I appreciate that. Yeah, we can, if you want, I can just, I can read it into the record just so we have it.
I went back and reviewed all the documents I've received going all the way back, and it wasn't under any of them, but it is dated. The copy I have is dated January tenth of twenty twenty-two.
I'll just double check that we have the same version. This is the subdivision plan prepared by Clearpoint Services, and it is dated January tenth, twenty twenty-two. Yes, thank you.
I just want to go on the record that that's the document that we're using as a subdivision.
I appreciate it. I'm sorry for not mentioning that. Thank you.
Anything else? If there are any members in the public who wish to address the board on this application,
please state your name. I'll put you on the list of speakers, and then you'll have five minutes to address the board and the applicant on the topic.
Charlie Cradaville.
Your name?
Frederick Howell, H A L E L U K.
H A L?
H A L. E L U K.
E L U K.
Anyone else?
All right. Going alphabetically, the first person up would be Mr. Frederick Howell.
Good evening.
Could you please state your names, your last name for the record?
Frederick Howell, H A L E L U K.
Okay. You swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your five minutes begin now.
I think that five minutes on each section, because they have at least an hour on each section or four to five minutes on each section. My qualifications are, and I'm seventy-nine and three-quarters of a year old. I've lived on this corner for twenty-five years, except for four years that I was at the University of Miami, which is my qualification, and my master's degree at Zetton Hall for one year. And I have had at least six houses within two hundred feet of this property during that period of time. I've had a factory in that period, three, two factories in that period of time. One burned down, one is still there. And my first question is, I have been involved with this, these five blocks going back toward New Brunswick for, since two thousand and two. So for twenty years, I've been involved with a redevelopment program that was considered, was called back in those days from Handy Street to Sanford Street. At the time, I had the best piece of property in the city of New Brunswick at the corner of Handy Street and Jersey Avenue. That redevelopment property was a goldmine undoubtedly. It's the most traffic-crossed corner in the city of New Brunswick, if you don't count During that period of the redevelopment, I was forced out of that building. And during that time, I lost, and up to now, financially, eleven and a half million dollars by not being able to develop my own property. It was taken away from me. I fought it for two years. It was taken away from me only under these auspices that it was for the betterment of the city. Now, I was always at the other end of the redevelopment plan, which was on the corner, which was on Sanford Street. I was on the corner and I was in the middle of the block. I tried to redevelop my property on Sanford Street, but because it was in the redevelopment zone, I was always denied. I never, and when I, it never even got to the planning board, because every time you go to these offices and these buildings, somebody else makes up their mind. It isn't these fine people here. There are people who are on the paid role of the city of New Brunswick who kill your deal. You can't fix nothing up. So I've lost in the same period of time another million and a half dollars worth of financial rewarding if I would have been able to use my property the way I wanted to, and I still can't use it on Sanford Street. I want to know what happened to that developer from Handy Street to Sanford Street. He was only developed what he wanted, and that school has only happened in the last six months. He stopped one-third of the way, just got the good car at my property, and he left it for eighteen years. Excuse me?
What did it warn him?
I asked for an aspect to talk about everything else on each one of the sections. So I'll go over to this building here.
The board rules only allow five minutes per speaker.
What section says that?
I don't have it on the map in my head, but.
I want to talk to each gentleman.
It doesn't. It doesn't say five minutes anywhere in the rules.
Mr. Cardika, what would you like?
My history is stronger than all of these people in here. Seventy-four and a half years, I even lived on those blocks. I grew up on those blocks. I owned a substantial portion of most of the blocks. I still live in New Brunswick. I've never moved out of New Brunswick other than the five, four and a half years I was at college. I know every crack in the road and that you're talking about. You go down Jersey Avenue right now, there is water on Jersey Avenue, by where you're talking about, the brook. It overflows every single rainy time it rains, and the police have to block that off. There have been so many businesses that have lost tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars just in the last two years because of the flooding right at that brook there. The other side of the brook which they're not talking about is worse on Joyce Kilmer Avenue where it comes through. That gets stuck and flooded so many times, and it's blocked off in almost six blocks in each direction. Those people, the last flood, have lost over two million dollars on their, within two hundred feet of the Joyce Kilmer Avenue. You cannot say that this project is going to come through there and not affect the environmental aspect of the brook that comes through there when today, when you go back, you can see there's water on the road because that brook overflows every single time even on a small rain. And there should be no reason there's water on the road today with all the heat and everything. It's been that way for two weeks, water on the road. It's coming from the brook. It doesn't function right. It never functioned right. The reason you can't come up on Jersey Avenue, from French Street to Jersey Avenue, is because that corner had so many accidents on French Street to come up that the state of New Jersey put that big obstacle in there so nobody could turn on that corner to come up because anytime Route One is stuck, the people come up down Jersey Avenue all the way from North Brunswick to get through town, or they come on French Street, and when they're both jammed, they used to come up Sanford Street. Sanford Street's a one-way street and it's a dead-end street. You can't even move on that street now without telling me that a third of the, half of the traffic's in the corner, no, a third, there's two driveways on Jersey Avenue. The other aspect, Jersey Avenue is now only at one lane in each direction. You're going to try to make it into a superhighway? There's, you're going to get rid of the two There's, you're going to get rid of the two sidewalks to put another lane in? And how far is it going to go? The roadway to turn into your project would only keep about three cars in that middle lane. This is impossible to do. Where are people going to walk that walk along both sides of that street?
I'm not actually familiar with that, but you know, maybe the engineers can address that question of how, because I know it is a narrow.
So where are they going to do, how are they going to do it?
Mr. Saffinaz, Jersey Avenue is county road, correct?
That's correct.
And the county has reviewed this plan?
Yes.
And Mr. Chapala, as well as yourself, talked about improvements along Jersey Avenue. I believe the sidewalk was being installed along the frontage.
Right. I testify that as well. So on Exhibit 83, which is up right now, I testify that a brand-new sidewalk is being proposed, actually all the way along Jersey Avenue across the entire frontage.
What the gentleman is saying is it's not going to fit. Can you?
Excuse me?
What I'm hearing from the gentleman is it's not going to fit because the road is just, or the right-of-way is just too narrow.
Yeah, well.
Can you just address that?
Yeah, there is enough, there's enough width for us to be able to provide the sidewalk. It's clearly shown in our plan. It works. In fact, we're, because the buildings, we're actually pushing our buildings, the buildings off the residential, well, really, all the buildings are actually technically set back further from the roadway, the cartway of the roadway than the existing building, the existing commercial buildings are. So we're providing more room, there's more than adequate room for sidewalks along Jersey Avenue for Sanford.
So where are you going to get the property? The public, the city is giving away all the sidewalks to your redevelopment program? You're going to walk on your property now? That's not going to, that's not going to be a public right-of-way.
There is, there is sidewalk, there's enough room. All I can say is there's enough room in the right-of-way to provide our sidewalks.
This continues, right-of-way will be maintained, right-of-way.
On the other side of the street, they put in a distribution center two, two years ago.
I'm aware, yeah.
You can't move on the corner of Sanford Street and Jersey Avenue because the distribution center is put in there. You have fifty-three-foot trailers trying to turn into that distribution station right now that would be impossible to do with a three-lane situation. Right now, because of the way the building that is existing.
Excuse me, we did have a test for the right traffic to solve the limitations that, you know, and, you know.
Well, I'm going to measure that road and measure that and find out how wide the street can be because you cannot fit three cars wide there now. There is no extra space on the sidewalk now. There's no parking on either side of the street because there's no room to park on this Jersey Avenue.
Sir, I appreciate your comments. Unfortunately, the current rules of the board are to limit to five minutes. And I think you made your point, you know, with regards to the aspects of this particular development that, you know, you were.
What's going to happen to us people who own the properties there?
I don't think they're going to be affected.
They're going to be affected, there's no kidding. How many trucks are going to be getting in and out of that street? It's a lot, it's a, then in the street, you're going to have one thousand, three hundred cars possibly coming out of one, the three entrances? That's four hundred some cars in the morning, four hundred some cars if you all choose to go in the three different directions.
I understand, but you know, we're, we have to rely on the experts who provide.
They never live in the neighborhood. I can hire as many as you want to show the opposite. This is the first time this thing's been legally submitted to anybody. If you would have told me two years ago, when, because I got denied two years ago to fix my building up, that the reason was this was going to happen, I could have had as many people here, I could afford just as many of these guys as you can, they can, to stop this paper trail of a beautiful thing. It's not a beautiful thing because you still did end up developing from Handy Street to Sanford Street. When are you going to finish that? I want a document, put it in, that if this project goes through, everybody who voted on it is receptive to a legal lawsuit from me because they didn't stop them in case they don't do every single thing that they've said tonight. Because you know it isn't going to happen. That section there, the end, there are four streets that you're going to, has anybody ever gone on those streets? They're only one block long. The first one's one block going towards French Street. The second one is one block long, and the next two are too narrow.
I'm sorry.
Nobody can go across those two. You have to go all the way up to Howellane to cross into New Brunswick. Again, the most valuable cross street is Handy Street and Howellane. This project is not going to fly, and anybody who approves it will end up getting sued by me.
Yeah.
Please state your names, call your last name for the record.
Charlie Cradaville, C R A T O V I L.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
Yeah, I do. And before I begin, I'd like to be recognized as an objector under Section D, 2.2D. I am disappointed to hear statements being made that, that there's a five-minute time limit on public comment, but just to be clear, I'm asking to be recognized as an objector at this point.
Charlie, I read your memo you provided for Monday. Thank you, I appreciate that. I think I, I think I have, it was helpful. I think I have a better understanding of your position with regard to the, you know, the questioning of the chair's status. I mean, I think the question here is, you know, do you qualify as an objector based on what you want to present? So, and as you know, the majority of public commentary that we receive doesn't exactly keep praise, you know, on the, on the board or on the, or on the applicants, that sort of thing. And so, you know, there's a, I have a concern about setting a precedent that anyone will come in and just say, well, I'm an objector and I can just speak as long as I want, that kind of thing. And unlimited time and unlimited content, that sort of thing. So as, as we did, I think on Monday, I'm going to ask ten minutes, please, and try and explain to me and to Mr. Solomon, who's going to ask for advice here, what is the basis for classifying yourself as an objector as opposed to just providing public comments?
Certainly. And I'll be frank that I, I did not put in writing that I wanted to be an objector for this application. I decided while I was sitting here tonight and I heard that there was an error in the application that I had reviewed thoroughly and was pleased to see the applicant exceeding the minimum amount of affordable housing. And now I've come to find out that I was misled and others were misled. You know, I was on a call with my policy team about this and we were, you know, there's some people that are going to be upset to hear that, who may well have missed out on their chance. So my first objection would be that I would ask you, sir, to table this matter and hold it, hold another public hearing to hear from the public after it's been shared with the public that in fact, there's only going to be sixty-six units of affordable housing.
That is the basis for your objection?
That is the, the primary reason I'm objecting tonight, yes.
Mr. Solomon, can you please advise on, is that, does that provide sufficient basis for Cradaville to be an objector?
I don't believe so. The basis of being an objector is if you're going to address the criteria that the board has to consider, that is to say, the positive and negative criteria, whether it affects the, what the planners discussed, whether it affects the master plan or the redevelopment plan. If you object to a particular aspect of the project as, as part of public comment, then you're making a public comment. But specifically, objector status refers to addressing the specific criteria that this board has to consider, the positive and negative criteria. His concern, as stated, by the way, of objection is, is the legal sufficiency of the documentation of the application that the applicant has provided. I don't believe that that is the same. Now, that's not a big part. And as to the question about whether or not there should be another hearing, that's certainly within your discretion. The applicant has provided the minimum necessary affordable housing units. He's allowed to make amendments, changes to his plan, and in particular, in this case, he described it as a typographical. So that's certainly within your discretion to rule that objection.
It was always my understanding, we talked about the number of affordable units. It was always my understanding that that was going to be ten percent, which is sixty-six units. Six-six, correct? Do I have that right?
That's correct, sir. It's also governed by the redevelopment plan, which is a public document, the redevelopment agreement, they all say sixty-six.
Yeah, and, and again, you know, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as I know, this site plan is, with the seven of the variances that were requested, is, is consistent with the, with the Jersey-Samford redevelopment plan areas that the board has approved, previously approved, correct?
Yes.
Correct. So in that sense, really what we're, the board's only question here is consistency, is the site being consistent with this. So again, if, based on the counsel I'm getting here from Mr. Solomon, I think you're, you know, we're, I'm going to allow you to provide your normal five-minute commentary rather than do so with added objector.
Okay, well, I'll respect your decision, but I will note that historically, this board has not had a time limit for public comments, and that was only instituted in 2020. And, and you passed rules that have been alluded to tonight, but the rules don't actually say five minutes. They say it's the chair's discretion. So it's your discretion. It's not Mr. Dominguez's discretion. It's not set in stone. And I'll note that the other gentleman got more than five minutes, so I hope that you'll give me a little bit of leeway to just ask my questions of the, of the witnesses.
Well, I allow you to proceed, and what I'll say is that, you know, I'll consult with Dan and others between now and the next meeting and to, again, revisit this five-minute limitation, because I am aware that in fact, there wasn't this limited limitation.
Yeah, and, and you know, we're not in a municipal council meeting here. This is, you know, there's a statutory right to cross-examine witnesses, and I'll note that Section 2.2C of your rules refers to that, but it gives you sole discretion to open it up. It didn't appear you opened it up to the public. You only opened it up to your professionals and the board members to, to do the cross-examination. So now finding myself denied objector status, not getting recognized under 2.2C or D, now we're under 2.2F, and I get five minutes to cross-examine all the witnesses and make my, say my piece and, you know, to, to lay whatever objections I have on the table, it's really, it's really not enough time, frankly. So that's my position. Thank you for hearing me out, and I will now begin my, my remarks on the project. I want to start by, some questions for Mr. Meade about that error. You know, it was referred to as a typographical error. When was the error discovered? And who made the error?
The, as we mentioned, this is a typographical error. We had always intended to provide ten percent of the affordable requirement. It's purely a drafting issue when we were exercising some, you know, restroom locations and things, as well as trash room locations. So it's, it's nothing more than that.
Okay, so for the record, my questions were not answered. Who, who made the error and when was it discovered? Obviously, you knew about it before your testimony tonight because you addressed it. When was it discovered?
It was discovered within the last few days.
Yeah, respectfully, would have liked to have been informed of that, would have liked new records to be put forth that were correct. I know there's a ten-day requirement for the records to be available for ten days. You know, I, I just want to reemphasize my objection that another hearing would be appropriate, given the fact that, you know, misleading information was shared with the public and not corrected when there was an opportunity to correct it, even if it may have meant delaying tonight's hearing. I think the right thing to do would be to, to hold another hearing, and that's your decision, Chair.
Mr. Cradaville, I'm just going to object on the record by your use of the term misleading. According to witness, it was an honest typographical mistake. Mr. Meade, you submitted numerous revisions over the two years that this has been pending, correct?
That's correct.
Did those revisions, to your knowledge, have the sixty-six or the seventy-two?
Sixty-six.
Continue.
Okay, thank you for, for that. Also wanted to address the warrants analysis for the traffic signal. Pleased to see there's going to be a traffic signal there, but I did just want to note that it, it doesn't acknowledge there's a, a school in the, in the survey area. Obviously, as was alluded to, there is a school coming online, hopefully next year. So that's all the more reason to prioritize getting that signal implemented and activated, and I think it, it is, is very, very sorely needed before any COs are issued. I do also want to note, or I want to, I want to question, I guess, on the, the Building One, or the Building A, the, the first building, the total is more than four hundred units. But there's also a, a section of the redevelopment agreement that says COs will only be issued for three hundred sixty units until such time as a commercial building gets a CO. So I just want to understand, only part of the first building is going to be, you know, occupied before the commercial comes online? Is that correct?
We are governed by the redevelopment agreement, and the number of residential COs that would be issued before the commercial building has to begin construction. As I mentioned in my overview, we are governed by the phasing that the city of New Brunswick has held us to in that redevelopment.
Okay, and speaking of, Section 2.05 of the redevelopment agreement does state that construction will commence within fifteen months of the execution agreement, which was December 2020. We're now, you know, well past that, and it does say that if construction is delayed beyond March 1st, 2022, the redeveloper may request an extension of the commencement date with good cause. I wanted to ask the applicant if they have done so, if they've requested that extension?
We've been in communication with Mr. Hoffman, the attorney for the redevelopment agency, and we've made a written request to his office. It's going to be presented to the redevelopment agency at their next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, I, I will, you know, close by expressing my disappointment with the lack of any public transit component to this project. Jersey Avenue is already, you know, as has been alluded to, a highly trafficked but very narrow road. This will add a lot more residents to the area and a lot more vehicles. Obviously, with structure parking, the expectation is that most folks are going to have a vehicle. And I think that it would have been nice to mitigate that by at least putting a bus shelter, since there are routes that do traverse Jersey Avenue, and hopefully in the future, there will be more public transit opportunities. I wanted to ask, would the applicant be willing to incorporate that or make that a condition of approval, that they would install and maintain a bus shelter somewhere along Jersey Avenue?
I saw some mention of this somewhere in the document, that there was a consideration of it, but there is no need in this time something to that.
Let Mr. Chapala speak to it, but my understanding from the discussions is that there is no bus line on that section of Jersey Avenue that would.
Or not currently operated.
Correct.
Well, I'll note that that's a, only a, because of the pandemic. And, you know, the county is currently reevaluating their routes and expects to relaunch, hopefully some of them, and, and I know Jersey Avenue is a primary corridor for their route, so, you know, while there may not be at this very moment a, a bus route on Jersey Avenue, but it doesn't make sense to, to not at least include that. So I, I would ask you to, to make that a condition of approval. I'm not sure if that's something you can do without their consent, but it's, it's very unfortunate to me that there's, that public transportation hasn't been factored in here. It, it really should be. Any project of this magnitude, it's a mistake not to. You know, it's nice to have, you know, bicycle parking and stuff like that, but realistically, you know, to get to downtown, to get to the train station, you know, bus service would be useful. Seems like your engineer might have something to say on that.
I just want to, if you may, this has been an ongoing point of discussion during the various tasks, and the last comment I have, comment seven.
the various acts, and the last comment I have, comment seven of my report, is in response to the concerns for a bus stop, stop, or shared ride servicing, the applicant has provided a loading slash ride-sharing bump-out area just inside the boulevard entrance off of Jersey Avenue between Buildings 1A, I'm sorry, 1B and 2A. So those bump-out areas that were described as a loading area, I was told were also to be available for things such as a bus stop or a ride-sharing function.
Okay. So if a bus turns in to the boulevard, it could stop at the building? And is it easy to turn a bus around on that boulevard?
No, it's a, it's got a center island, so no one would have to, more than likely would have to go, I would presume, and I'll leave it to the traffic expert, we'd probably have to exit out of Sanford, more than likely.
But a bus could fit through. It would go, I guess.
I believe so. You can make that appearance.
The bus that you're referring to is the Monmouth County Bus, which I believe are the shore buses, which is analogous to a single-unit delivery truck. This site can accommodate those types of vehicles coming in and out of the Channel Island. You're correct that they would need to come into the site, if they're coming from New Brunswick, make a left onto Sanford and then circulate through the site to get there. Or if they're coming towards New Brunswick, make a right into the driveway and then circulate to Sanford.
Okay. Well, you know.
The point being, it had been a point of discussion, it had been something that was brought up with the county, and this is the result that the developer has provided in response to that request.
Okay. Well, with all due respect, I find it insufficient. I think that public transit is really lacking in New Brunswick, and when we have, you know, huge developments coming with lots of money behind them, it's wise to plan ahead and not double down on the car culture. It seems like this is unfortunately doubling down on the car culture. And, yeah, just to reiterate my disappointment with the affordable housing being, you know, less than what was advertised in the documents posted on the city website. I would hope that you would find that to be good cause to, you know, schedule another public hearing where the public could be heard. And I guess.
Considering that this is, that the affordable housing component was always going to be 10% of the number of units, I don't consider this error sufficient to shelve this proceeding or throw this up.
Not asking you to shelve it, I'm asking for another opportunity for the public. I know people who would.
No, that's basically what I'm saying. I don't, I really, I just don't think that that sufficient basis to not proceed.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you hearing me out, and I do appreciate the thorough presentation.
Should we proceed, you look at the conditions associated with this? Oh, okay. Thank you.
And I also want your attorney to close for Mark.
Oh, okay. Are there any further questions, comments, concerns from board members? Mr. Carr, is there a statement?
I'll be really brief, Chairman. Thank you. And thank you to the public and your consultants for your time this evening. As was noted, this is an exciting project for the City of New Brunswick, and unfortunately to say that hasn't seen as much development as other areas in the city. The site will be, again, remediated, it'll be improved, you're seeing a total reduction in previous coverage. It does have green components, as we talked about, the EV charging stations, solar on the roof on the parking deck garage. It advances a number of goals, as the planner stated, to the municipal land use laws, what was the master plan in the City of New Brunswick. The deviations that were identified this evening are minor in nature according to our professionals and can be granted without substantial detriment, public good without substantial impairment, the intent and purpose of the zone plan. This project will take a site, underutilized site, that has had historical problems and convert it to a vibrant park of this section of the city, providing housing opportunities, affordable units in accordance with the redevelopment plan, as well as commercial component for jobs and opportunities for employment. And the total picture, as you see from the exhibits that have been presented, it's been designed to promote the visual environment, to remove buildings that are beyond their useful life. And for the reasons that have been provided to this evening, we would respectfully request and approve the application. We appreciate the time and consideration and the comments from the members of the public. So thank you again. And again, thank you to the city and your consultants for working with us throughout this process. As the witnesses testified, we're very far along with the outside agencies, so we look forward to moving forward and having this project become a reality. Thank you again.
Should the board act favorably on this application, we recommend that following institutions of approval, compliance with the terms of the City and the Mayor Report dated July 11, 2022, payment of a site performance bond and an amount reviewed and approved by the city engineer, submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in the month allocated pursuant to Title 1624160, payment of all water sewer connection fees pursuant to Title 1304 and 1328, issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer required. The applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting with the city engineering department, compliance with the terms of the Big Knock Consulting Group Report dated July 12, 2022, payment of any redevelopment fee applicable to the City of New Brunswick, planning review escrow funded for all anticipated post-approval reviews, payment of any other fees due to the City of New Brunswick related to redevelopment or use of the project, payment of outstanding taxes and water sewer fees, Middlesex County Planning Board approval or waiver, DNR Canal Commission approval or waiver, Freehold Soil Conservation District approval or waiver, any other outside agency approval or waiver as required, filing of a subdivision in accordance with the MAP Filing Act, submission of engineering and/or architectural plans complying changes required by the planning or engineering memos or planning members offered in the hearing, any execution of a Title 39 Parking Enforcement Agreement, the signalization of the intersection at Sanford Street will be tied to the completion of Phase 1 of the project, compliance with the city's water service system ordinance, trash recycling pickups will be provided by a private hauler in the vicinity of the city, the applicant shall work with the city to provide native plantings on the site to the greatest extent practical, a solar flashing crosswalk shall be provided at the Park Street crosswalk, subject to county approval, all utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense, all onset utilities to be constructed underground, all temporary encroachments of the public right of way shall require city council approval, all construction stations shall be done on site unless an encroachment allowing of the public right of way is approved by the city council, she shall be kept clean or sedimented in degree, the applicant shall process she to be cleaned if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works, replacement of damage trees, perp side walk is for the Director of the City Engineer, and the applicant is seeking a preliminary and final site plan as well as major subdivision. The variance for appropriate surface cover to be eliminated, they're seeking a variance for off-street loading as well as design waivers for partial parking deck screening, drive-through width, lighting level uniformity, illumination level of the property line, illumination ratio for commercial parking lots, and partial foundation plantings.
Do you have any other conditions?
You indicated that the developer would agree to maintain the park space?
It's an obligation under the redevelopment plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else in terms of recommended conditions associated with this? No motion?
I'll make a motion.
Who's that?
I have. A motion to.
I need what?
I'm told.
Second.
A second. Yelitza Chekov?
Yes.
Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
Suzanne Sincora-Luckwood?
Yes.
Ivan Adorno?
Yes.
The Anna Lopas?
Yes.
Zach Ray?
Yes.
Anthony Camioni?
Yes.
Not part of them.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and your consideration this evening and for the feedback you received. Thanks again.
Not yet.
It was very nice, and I would have.
I was so warm.
Monday, I was worried.
It was very nice, and I would have.
I was so warm.
Thank you for coming up.
Other matters of interest?
If anybody wants to address the board, if you want to listen to the speakers, kind of like you're ready, if you're ready, you don't need to start before you give your name to the speaker.
Thank you. I need to begin with an apology to Mr. Ferguson. I owe you an apology. I know Monday night I laid an objection to his participation in the application based on what I'd read on the city website, and I, you know, should have checked the municipal land use law before, and I did. And, you know, the reality is that there's a specific statement about nine-member boards, where if it's a nine-member board, there can be one member who is on the zoning board. That said, there's nothing about housing authority members or anything else, whether or not that counts as a municipal office for purposes of that, so I would ask that that be looked into, the other issue I raised, but I did see, you know, plain as day that that specific issue was addressed in the MLUL, so please accept my apologies. And I did want to ask again about the venue of the meetings and the method of the meetings. I do think that having a remote participation option, you know, likely would benefit the public and perhaps board members as well. I know sometimes these meetings run late, and we have, you know, this week, two meetings in one week, so definitely would ask you to consider that hybrid option. Is there any update on whether that's a possibility?
I can only say it's only been a couple of days since we last asked, so I do not have a chance to do it this time, but we are looking.
Thank you for looking into it. And, yeah, I would also ask about the physical space that we meet in. I, you know, overheard some people talking about the temperature here. I can say that it's definitely an awkward physical space to be lining up in and sitting down in, and, you know, the presentation and all that, and difficult to hear sometimes, especially for the folks in the back. Any thought about, you know, meeting in a different room?
Yeah, Mr. Crad, we were considering different spaces within the, of dinner of cities, and we felt that to give, for comfort for folks, so that they can be more spaced out than in city council chambers, because, you know, we have a much larger board than the city council, and make sure that everybody can feel comfortable. This was sort of the best space that the city had to accommodate that. There are sort of, you know, unique circumstances of the space that are different, like sound-wise, movement-wise, but I do believe that it's for the purposes of our meetings right now, given the current state of the pandemic or post-pandemic, whatever you want to call it, that it's still probably prudent to be running meetings out of this room based on the spaces we have.
Okay.
An improvement to the previous, we had, or as I.
Some ways, I guess. But I understand the desire to be spaced out. That's fair. And I did also just want to ask about Mr. Castaneda. Is he still the chair of the board, just been absent for the past two meetings? That's fine. Okay. Thank you. That's all I had tonight. Thank you for your time. Have a good one.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second. Would you prefer?
Aye.